Okay. All right, we're going to call the meeting together. This is our joint Planning Commission and Affordable Housing Committee meeting for Tuesday, November 25th. So our first item, I guess we're called to order, is a roll call.
Roll call. Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Esset.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez-Parva.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Chair Ketchum. Vice Chair Kirlein.
Here.
Commissioner Lamott. And committee members, Mr. Bragman.
Here.
Ms. Kohler.
Here.
Commission Member Gardner.
Here.
Hochstrasser.
Here.
Snadbeck.
Here.
And Gettime.
You good on that one? Okay. So we have open time, public comment.
Mr. Chair, approval of agenda?
Oh, you're right. So the next would be to move approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second? Second out there?
Second.
Any opposition? Okay, agenda posting of the agenda is approved. Now we get to public comment. Nicolo.
I, is it three minutes? Approximately. So Nicolo Calderon, I just want to make a couple, I will request first, and it's about housing inventory. I just wanted to know if anybody has seen the housing inventory for Fairfax.
So, Mr. Chair, this is if anything is not on the agenda for tonight, and then on the agenda items, we can also entertain public meetings or public comments if you want. I didn't, it's little, it's-
I think, I think his question was just informational, so do-
We will be going over the existing housing opportunity sites tonight in our review of what we're doing.
No, no, I mean, housing inventory. You know, like San Francisco has a housing inventory, all the units and what they're being used for, and-
Thank you.
The county doesn't have one, but-
No, we don't have one.
We don't have one. So we did one in 98, and we used it in 2000 when we tried to get the size of the houses down to 2,000 square feet. And I'd like to make an appeal that you consider dropping the house, maximum housing size down to 2,000 square feet, again, because what I'm really appealing for is our most affordable housing, which are really small houses which are being victimized now because they're being enlarged out of all proportion, and there, a lot of them are rental units. So I also, you know, in 2004, I wrote a book, Sustainability, which covered cultural aspects of sustainability around the world and historically, and I urge people to read Saskia Sassan's book on cities, because at least in 2004, it was possible for the cities to be changed, they might be sustainable, but now Saskia says, like people are saying with climate change, that we've gone beyond allowing our how, our climate to be reversed, and I think that she's making a good argument that that's the same thing with our cities. There are a number of books out about how we're sprawling and how we're unable to control that, and water is really a problem. So what I'm really requesting is that people look into the problem that we're having with the type of housing we're calling affordable, because if you look at the 1960 housing inventory for San Francisco, and look at the one in 2010, we've got about the same number of population. The units are 50,000 more, but the definition of family has decreased, so that many of the units now contain only one or two people, whereas in 1960, four to five people, and also the units are larger. And so the affordability in 1960 was 30 to 40 percent of people's income, and now it's over 60 percent of their income. So when you talk about affordable housing, I really want people to think about how to get there, and I think the best way is maintain our small housing and to set up a housing development corporation for Fairfax, so that we might be able to act like a housing bank and actually build, get grants and build housing that would be affordable for the people who are actually working here and servicing our homes in our community. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Nicolo. And I think actually we may be talking about a similar project with the report on the Breenus Land Housing Trust, is somewhat of a similar structure for actually building our own. Wendy.
Yeah, this might be a fuzzy area that might, may or may not be considered on the agenda, and you can just let me know. I want to talk about policies and programs in the housing element. I know that Fairfax has, in its general plan, the intention to create design standards, has not had the opportunity to get to that yet, and I think one of the important things about, about identifying housing, it's good to show the appropriate locations, but we also want to shape the housing. And design standards, and this goes right along with what Nicolo's talking about, can include size limitations. For instance, in, you know, in the CC areas, if the size limitation can be limited to 700 square feet, that would be an example of something that would help to shape the development in the way that I think everyone is in agreement, would be more affordable. Design standards such as setbacks, ways in, you know, things that are in the town center plan with setbacks and the kind of things that conform to the character of Fairfax, these things not only can be put in generally, but they actually can be site-specific. And you can, you know, identify any particular property that you have designated for housing and do some site-specific standards for that. So I ask that you discuss that and have that included in the update of the housing element. Thank you.
Is there anybody else with public comment? Is that public comment? Okay, so we'll close public comment, and we'll take the Planning Director's report.
Can you all hear me? Hello? Okay, so just briefly, tonight, we're going to be going over the way forward in doing the housing element update, and it's going to be pretty straightforward. Before we get into that, though, I just want to report to you that the Church Project is moving ahead. The nonprofit Resources for Community Development in Berkeley had a selection committee they put together, and they put out a request for proposals from architectural firms. Mr. Kenning sat on that review committee, and there was an architectural firm selected, which the name is again-
I don't remember its-
Yeah. Anyway, it's a good firm out of Berkeley, and that's moving forward. And then I was fortunate to have a meeting with the gentleman who wrote the book on cohousing, Chuck Durett. He came into the office to inquire about Tenolima, which is still a targeted opportunity site in our existing housing element, and he and a couple other folks came in to chat, and I mentioned that it was targeted for workforce housing, but if someone wanted to come in and apply for senior cohousing, which is what his recent book is on, they would be more than welcome to. So he's reaching out to Mr. Joe Weinsidler, who owns Tenolima, and we'll be chatting, chatting with him. It was a very interesting discussion. So moving forward, again, tonight, we're just here to brief you on the path forward. If you recall, on November 5th, the Town Council gave us the go-ahead with moving forward with what's being referred to as the fast-track approach, to try to get a adopted housing element by May 31st, 2015. And at the last council meeting, Mr. Egger made the comment that it was his understanding, based on information from a member of ABAG, that municipalities can simply roll over their previous sites into the next housing element. So we did some research on that, and in fact, it's true that if a town has a adopted housing element that is state-certified, you could, in essence, roll over any sites identified previously to accommodate the new arena. However, Fairfax has an adopted housing policy, but is technically out of compliance with the state because of the repeal of ordinance 778 adopting the zoning map called for in the housing element and the land use element. So we're technically out of compliance. We would have up until the end of January 15, that's month after next, to get into compliance, but it does not look like in any way that we would be on a trajectory at this point to do that. But it turns out that in the regulations that require us to go back one arena, if we do what's called a 1233, this is AB 1233 that was passed in 2005, and this is just for the records in the, moving forward, and I'll put this up for the audience as well, we have to accommodate the immediate past arena. Just a second, warm up. So technically, if a town was in compliance, adopted, had an adopted housing element and was in compliance, we could just roll over our sites, but because we are out of compliance, we have to go back to the previous arena. Give me a minute here. So this is to illustrate sort of where we are going forward. And I have a copy of this also.
So, Jim, can I ask a question?
No.
Okay, we're broken.
No. Here, we'll share.
Question is, I think the issue was, if you hadn't constructed sites, then you could roll over that arena. So our new arena is 61, and it was my understanding that if we hadn't constructed 61 sites, we could roll that over. And I thought that your initial discussions with HCD said yes, and that we did have an approved housing element, so I'm confused.
Right, it's not just a, it's not just an adopted housing element that was certified by the state, it has to be in compliance. So we have an adopted housing element that is certified by the state, but we're technically out of compliance because we have not adopted the zoning map changes or the zoning ordinance changes called for in that document. So what AB 1233 does is says, you have to go back to the prior arena. You do not have to go two back, though. You can go one back, okay? But you have to do the analysis, in our case, for arena cycle four and five. So let me just walk you through these, and then that might help clear up a little bit.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So on the agenda, we have a review of the fifth cycle arena. Are we going to be discussing this then, or are we doing it in the Planning Director's-
I'm, I'm giving you an overview, and then we'll get into the woods. I'm just reporting in response to the assertion that we could simply roll over the sites. It's a little more complicated than that, because we're technically out of compliance. I will in a minute when you're giving yours. So, and I'm going to bring up our subconsultant, Amy Schinheimer, from PMC, in a moment. She's going to join us via Skype when we get to that item on the Agenda Six. I'll be doing that in a second. But what you see here is a table that is the strategy on how we met arena cycle three and four. It was adopted, amended and adopted in October of last year and certified by the state. And that subtotal, what we accommodated on the right-hand side, was 124, and we were able to accommodate all the 172 from the two cycles, because we had previously zoned 20, we had existing zoning for 21 sites, and then we had units built between 1999 and 2014 that equalled 27, and that brought us up to the total there on the bottom right, if you look here, of 172, okay? Our new arena, I'll get to this in more detail in a minute, is for cycle four and five, and it actually goes down by three when you add the total. So bear with me for a minute.
Question?
Yeah.
Okay, so three, four totaled 172, correct?
Yeah.
Now you're saying four and five totals 169. Is that minus the 21 and 27?
Let me, let me walk you through those tables, I think it'll clear up for you. But just a couple caveats quickly. The first asterisk is on the two sites, the Church and Tenolima. That's the 20-unit space density. If you recall, we applied the 20-unit space density to just those two sites, and we're optimistic that that will, in rolling it over for the next arena, cover our lower income thresholds. The second caveat, the double asterisk on the number 27 towards the bottom, for those built from 99 to 214, we actually can't count everything going forward from 99 to 214. We can only count the most immediate cycle four. So I'll get to that in a moment, what the actual count is. And then lastly, with regards to the 169 going forward, we can, if we want to during this analysis, substitute optional sites. So here, Barbara, in essence, is what we're talking about. If you notice, the red lines through the top row, that was the 99 to 2006 arena, was 64, that drops away. We still have to deal with the 2007, the 2014, and that's 108. And our new arena for 1523 is 61, so our new total is 69. 169, forgive me.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're saying that we can't roll over our arena units from the last time, because we're out of compliance?
We can't-
The state's determined that we're out of compliance?
We are out of compliance, because we, we would have to adopt the zoning amendments by January 31st of 15, which is the end of cycle four planning period.
It seems like it would be a good idea to do, if we could.
To, to, to do what? I'm sorry?
Well, I mean, I just don't understand, I mean, have we been officially found by the state to be out of compliance?
We're technically out of, if you look at the document I gave you from the state, on the second page, you'll see a list of applicability, actually might be, actually the first page, the very bottom of the first page, last bullet, this is when AB 1233 applies. Fail to identify or make available adequate sites to accommodate a portion of the regional housing needs. And I should really get our subconsultant up on the Skype in a minute to help address some of these questions.
Just right there, bottom bullet.
So we're going to get into the woods on this, and I'll come back, we'll come back to this slide in a minute, actually. But that, basically, my report is that we have to deal with cycle four and five, and three goes by the wayside, okay? And in a minute, Tony, we're going to get into the strategy on meeting the timeline, and the subconsultant can actually help us on some of your other more detailed questions. So Larry, um-
Could I, could I just, you know, I, I think Tony's point is, is worth following up on, because some of the language appears a little bit contradictory, because it says the code section 6558409 will not apply where the current element was found in compliance by the government, by the department, which it was, and either the inventory of sites required by 65583 or the program actions and the element to rezone were fully implemented and made available. So I think it's worth pursuing-
We're, we're technically, I think there's a, I'm not doing a good job with the semantics, I think, we're technically out of compliance with the state, because we have not implemented the zoning changes called for in the housing element. We would have to be in compliance, we would have to adopt the zoning changes. That means the map and the language changes in the zoning ordinance by the end of January 2015, to be in compliance. We are technically out of compliance.
Okay, well, I mean, I know that's your opinion, it's just that, you know, the town went through a referendum. The way I'm reading it, looks like our housing element did provide an inventory of sites required, so-
We can get, let me, I think I should-
I can interject, I mean, it provided, it identified sites, but it didn't make them available.
Right, but that's, that's not required.
Well, we, let me, let me get Amy up in a moment, and if it's okay, Mr. Chair, if we could move on to number five, I'll pull up Amy while Larry's reporting on some of the questions that were-
Can I, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
That is, is the only, is the only reason why we're out of compliance, because the zone, zoning wasn't approved?
Correct.
So my question to Larry is, do you think that that is a possibility?
Actually, actually, I forgot to mention one important thing, forgive me. When we do the analysis, which Amy and Larry will start doing, we will go through this thorough analysis on how we're going to become compliant, and we get actually an extra year to be compliant. We actually then have one additional year, which is listed on that document, which means we have until January 31st, 2016, to become compliant. Hi, Amy.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Got a room full of people.
Great.
Can you see us online?
Yes, I can mostly see you, but I can see some of the people.
Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, great. Can everybody hear?
Yes.
This is Amy Schinheimer, Schinheimer, from PMC. Are you technically in Sacramento or San Luis Obispo right now?
I'm in San Luis Obispo.
All right, get to work at home today, good. Okay, so we're going to have some questions. I actually just did a little intro, went through some of the charts, and we had a question we were just sort of chewing on for a moment, maybe Larry, you could repeat that.
So, hi, Amy.
Hi.
So the question is whether Government Code Section 65584.09 applies or doesn't apply to Fairfax, given its somewhat unique circumstances.
So can you tell me what section that is that we need looking at, or can you go-
Actually, I think what Mr. Bragman is getting to is, I mentioned that we have a certif, we have an adopted and certified housing element, but we're technically out of compliance because we have not made the zoning changes, and we would have to do those zoning changes by the end of January 2015 to be compliant.
2016, is that what you said?
I beg your pardon. If, in this planning cycle, cycle four, for us to be compliant, we have to get it done by January 31st, 2015. And after you complete the 1233 analysis to the satisfaction of HCD, we would have another year to become compliant.
That is correct, except for what we heard from HCD, and what it does say in the statute, is that sites would need to be made available early enough in any period to actually be developed, and at this point, because it's less than two months from the end of the pending period, of course, just about two months, that is too late to be developable within the fourth cycle. So we've really passed the point where we could meet the obligation for the fourth cycle and not have to deal with it in the next.
Great.
I have a question.
Could we, can we appeal to HCD? Does HCD know that Fairfax went through a referendum process that set, that basically froze the council from taking any action? I mean, do they know about that? Has anybody made them aware of that?
They do, and Jim, I don't know if you want to respond to this more, you doubled it more, perhaps, than I have.
They're very aware of what we've gone through, and they're also aware of the findings that were added to the repeal ordinance 780 that the town stands behind the general plan in the housing element, and this was to give us more time to go through the process of making the zoning changes in a more thorough, current, public process. And again, as I read it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, this allows us another year to become compliant, and, and the arena three drops by the wayside, it's gone.
That's correct. The difference is that if you had more time in the fourth cycle, you would not have to address, you know, if you got your zoning in place, you wouldn't have to address the 108 units there.
Amy, I have a question.
My concern is that that's, we've passed that point.
So Amy, I have a question. I'm Barbara Kohler, one of the council members on affordable housing, and I worked in the state for 22 years and did quite a bit of enforcement. So reading this letter, that I don't know if you have a copy of, it's dated June 20th, 2007. It has an excerpt that says, "Government Code Section 65584.09 generally will not apply to local governments where the current element was found in compliance by the department" and either. First bullet, "The inventory of sites required by Section 65583A3 identified adequate sites", we did that, "or the program actions and the element to rezone or provide adequate sites were fully implemented and made available adequate sites." And we did not do that, but it's an or. And the first part of it that talks about the current element was found in compliance, my read of that is not because we didn't move forward and we haven't implemented all the zoning that's possible, that's, to me, reads that they certified our element. When you go to the Government Code Section 65584.09 will apply to local governments, that, and then it talks about not, I guess, my question is going back to the first part of this, when Frank Egger, who used to be on the council, asserted that we could roll over any units that were unconstructed into the new arena, and by doing so, because we didn't construct 61 new units, we've got it, you know, we're there. And to me, that's where we're at. Now Jim is also, and I think this isn't clear to people that are sitting here, saying that another thing that you found out was that the earlier arena three is kind of gone. So basically, that's good news there. But I guess I'm going back to, I think the first part of the question is, we're assuming, and no offense to people that are planners that don't do enforcement, that the word saying the current element was found in compliance, to me, that means they certified it, which they did, and we did the first part of it. I've done plenty of enforcement in the state of California, I'm wondering why we're reading this, and we meet the first part of the or. So my question is, have we really explored this, or are we just dismissing it out of And I'm asking you because I understand you're an expert in these areas.
Yes, so my understanding, you're probably in the state, from reading their memo on the statute, is that what's made by identify sufficient sites, is that you don't have a program in your housing element to complete your inventory, and Fairfax did in their fourth housing element, so that fourth cycle, so that is why there's the or, which is that you completed that implementation. So if you had had enough land that was already zoned to meet your obligation under the third four cycles, then you wouldn't have needed that program for the two sites to be rezoned. So does that make sense?
No, it doesn't, because when you read a statute and it says or, it means either done one or the other. We did the first one, so I'm not really sure what you're saying. What you're saying is you're combining both of them, like there was an and there, if I'm understanding you correctly.
No, I was saying that you did not do either, actually, because we didn't have, the town didn't have sufficient sites that were appropriately zoned at the time of adoption of the half fourth cycle.
Okay, that's not what the first part of it says. It says, "The inventory of sites required by Section 65583A3 identified adequate sites." It does not go on to say and zoned.
So identifying adequate sites means the zoning is, the HCD's requirements are met through the various zoning they have on the sites and other standards?
You know, I, I really disagree with you. I, I think it would be a good idea if you took a look at the statute, but I'm reading it, and it's jumping out just saying, "We identified an inventory," that's all it says. And then it goes on to say or, and implemented these rezonings, so it's an or, it's not an and.
May I jump in for a second? I think the- I think the kicker is the adequate sites in terms of where the sites are zoned currently to adequately address the housing needs. And the sites that are identified in our housing element are inadequate in the sense that they haven't been rezoned yet.
It doesn't, it doesn't ask for them to be rezoned. It just says identify them. And, you know, it's a fine enough legal point that I think maybe it's worth, you know, having our town council, our town attorney, taking a look at it and seeing whether we can, whether we meet the conditions of the statute here. Because, you know, if we can avoid having to identify 61 new sites, that's gonna help get the situation resolved.
So, first of all, Kennings was gonna report on a couple of questions. I suggest we just keep going with this discussion right now.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. I just think that we need a deeper look at that statute.
So, maybe we can just get into the woods for a second here on, Amy, can you see what I have up on the screen above you? Damian, can you flash the screen for us? Are we online on? Amy, you have us online?
I'm sorry, what is your question?
Do you have us online where you can watch the screen? What's being televised?
You mean, do I have your reading screen?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, alright, sorry.
I don't think I can do that at the same.
Okay, never mind. Okay, so, up here on this table, we have what we're considering our preliminary strategy for meeting the RENA of 4 and 5, okay? And here again is our quota for 4 and 5, is 169. This is what we had previously zoned, and in the last housing element, we subtracted. And then this is what we permitted since 2006 up to the end of 2014, 8. So, those come off the 169, and it gives us a balance of 140. We think we have adequate informal second units to cover 16 at least. And in the last one year, we've permitted 2. And the way the state thinks with regards to allowing second units, they want to see your track record. So, the fact that we've done 2 units in the last year, and we have 8 years in the planning cycle, we are going to try to ask, or the plan is to ask for 16 units of second units to be considered. That would then bring our subtotal RENA units for Cycle 4 and 5 down to 124, and that's exactly what we planned for in the last housing element. So, the good news, if you consider it good news, is that because RENA, Cycle 3 drops off, and because of our identified sites, we feel that we should be, with the addition of the second units, able to cover our next RENA for both Cycle 4 and 5. And because staff got out in front a little bit and talked about additional sites when we were under the impression that we had to accommodate all 61 with new sites, which was news to me, we've started talking about Deer Park Villa. And those 15 units could, we can, we can write this document, if you like, so that we could throw in the caveat that if any of these sites that we had previously identified, the 140 minus the 16, which is 124, that some of those sites could be substituted for this, or even a subsequent site going down. We don't actually have to make that formal move now. We can keep it as optional sites, as an optional site. Does that make sense?
Can I ask a question? So, I think one of the things you, I think, would be really good to highlight for people here is, even though I may be disagreeing, Larry may be disagreeing, others may be agreeing or disagreeing, what you're saying is, even though your assertion is that we can't roll over unconstructed units, is the good news is because RENA 3 is gone because of some other law of HCD, we're already where we need to be. We don't have to do anything new. So, that's great news. I still think we really should look into this other issue because I don't, to me, this is really something our town attorney should look into because we might even be more than there. And way more than there. And so, I think that's really important for people to get is that we could leave this meeting today saying, "We're already there." And not mess with anything and just stay where we're at.
The caveat, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, is we have to do the analysis and go through some, there's particulars when you go through these things that I've learned from experience. You just need to go through the process to make sure that you can get there. And we have other public hearings to go through also.
Right, but I mean, as far as the numbers, one option is do nothing.
Right, and just, I want to make clear, I didn't say we couldn't roll over our sites. I said, "We have to accommodate Cycle 4 as well as 5." And so, because 3 drops away, and 5 is actually 3 less than Cycle 3, we're in pretty good shape.
But I want to go back and address this issue of identifying sites.
Sorry, can you hit the, thank you, one more? It might be on.
Is that working?
One more.
This one's not working.
Just, the light's not working, but yeah, there you go.
I'll brush this one. The real issue on identifying sites is, from the state's standpoint, it's not sufficient to say, "We've identified a site." If we identify 100 sites that can be built in open space, but it's zoned for open space, it's a moot point. It needs to be zoned to allow, if a developer comes in tomorrow, we can't say, "Well, in four months, we're gonna rezone it, and once everything passes, that's okay." So, from the state's standpoint, if we've, if it's in the discussion, it doesn't matter. The zoning needs to be done. All the i's need to be dotted and the t's crossed for it to be developable at this point. So, we can look at the wall property, we can say we can build 100 units there. But we can't because the zoning is too restrictive to allow and accommodate that kind of growth. So, that's what they're really identifying here. So, I see where the council concern is. But the state's point is, you've got to be able to hit that ground when we have it. And if we don't, you're not in compliance.
Well, I'm just, I'm just reading the text. And it says, "Identifying adequate sites." It doesn't say rezoning them. You know, the town went through a long process to identify adequate and appropriate sites. So, I don't think our housing element is just identifying random open space. It's identifying sites that have been designated as adequate. And that's what we're required to do. So, I think there's a disagreement about statutory interpretation. And I just don't want to see the town rip itself apart trying to identify more sites to develop if it doesn't need to, which, so, that's my point.
Garrett reminded me just now that I should share with you. I had a phone conversation with the staffer at HCD and asked a specific question, and was answered exactly as you mentioned, Roxanne, is that from their standpoint, because the zoning changes didn't take place, we are technically out of compliance and would need to be in compliance by January 31st. So, I, I heard, we actually have asked for them to confirm what we, the four questions that we sent them in the email. And we've yet to have written confirmation back. But I had preliminary verbal confirmation from Ms. Melinda Coy on the phone. And then Amy has echoed that. And we do hope to get something back in writing from the state also.
I mean, not to put too fine a point on it, but sometimes even state employees don't interpret the law correctly. And I think it's worth having our town attorney look into it if it becomes an issue.
Well, let me, let me also bring up a point here. Is that the handout from this, the handout from the Department of Housing that you had, that you gave us, updated June 3, et cetera, refers to the inventory of sites required by Section 65583A3. And I happen to have 65583 here in front of me. And I agree with Larry 100% because I think there's an ambiguity in what we're talking about, but not so much in the law. Because what the law seems to say, 65583A, talks about a housing element that needs an inventory of resources and constraints relevant to meeting the needs. And then you go through other sections, B, C, D, et cetera, and they all talk about how to meet that housing element and identify that inventory. But then when you get to Section 65583F, that section says, "The deadline for completing required rezoning," I see better without my glasses here, "pursuant to subparagraph A of Paragraph 1, shall be extended by one year if the local government has completed the rezoning at densities sufficient to accommodate at least 75% of the units. And if the legislative body can find by substantial evidence that it had circumstances beyond its control so that it couldn't complete them, or the rezoning was made impossible due to deficiencies of the, or regulatory restraints and other conditions under which we get another year to do that rezoning." So, because of that subsection F of 65583 government code, I think it would be good to have another legal look at this.
So, I go back to my other question to our council members here. Do you actually think if you brought the rezoning back to the council, you wouldn't get a lot of pushback? Or you'd be able to, you'd be able to get it through?
I certainly don't think we could do that. You know, December and January. I think, you know, given time, we could do that, but not, or parts of it. I don't think, clearly, in a month or two, we can do that.
And I would say, you know, just to follow up on Phil's point on subsection F, we may be legally precluded from doing that because of the referendum, which I think is the extraordinary circumstance preventing us from doing it that would get us an additional year extension. So, it may all just be, you know, we may all be splitting hairs. You know, we may not have to split. But it's definitely worth just getting a real solid interpretation of what that allows us to do.
I mean, the good news is, we're kind of there with this other revelation that you guys uncovered. So, that's great. But going forward for future housing elements, it would be good to know. What is the spine point? Are, you know, are we interpreting this correctly, incorrectly? So that we would know the next time RENA comes around where we are at. So, I think definitely if we can have our town attorney look into that, that would be helpful. But for purposes of this meeting, I think we can move forward given what I would call the new revelation, that we're already, we're already got the numbers, and we can talk about what you, where you wanted to go next.
And that, that's basically it? And if anybody has, you know, other technical questions, this is a good time to use Amy's, you know, institutional knowledge. Sorry about that.
It was just similar on this particular point on, you know, I agree. I think getting an interpretation of 65583, 65583A3 will reveal what is meant by adequate. Because it sounds like identified adequate sites. We have identified sites. Are they adequate under 65583A3? That would depend on the interpretation of that statute to know whether they're adequate or not. And then I wasn't clear, again, the first part before you get to the "or's" where you have the "and," where it says, "The current element was found in compliance by the department." And I hear that it's not, I just wanted to hear again, that your interpretation was in compliance meant, could you just reiterate what you, what you understand as in compliance meaning in that particular sentence?
That's for me? So, the element, the fourth cycle element was found to be in compliance contingent upon the rezoning occurring soon enough in the fourth cycle to make those sites available. And so, when, one of the confusing things is that this law, AB 1233, that's put into code in the sections that you've been referring to, we have to address, Fairfax had to address this law in their last housing element as well. So, the rezoning programs that were put into place in the fourth cycle housing element were in response to this law because there was a shortfall or there was, there were sites from the third cycle that had not been met, there were not adequate sites for that cycle. So, because now has not been met again, we are under the same type of situation for the fourth and fifth cycles. But as we've been talking about, because we've done a lot more analysis than had occurred previous to the fourth cycle element, we feel like we're in a good position to meet the numbers if we have to address the fourth cycle.
Just kind of one overview comment in terms of where we've been in affordable housing and kind of inclusionary housing policies across the country. A lot of states don't have any requirements for affordable housing. A lot of municipalities don't have them. And where we were as a state was, we were sort of mandating units be available, low, very low, moderate income housing to be available. I want to say about 15 years ago, we found something like 75% of municipalities in California weren't in compliance. And kind of the softening, really, of policies was to not mandate actual units, the argument being if the market doesn't want to provide them, we can't force developers, in many cases, to go in and build low-income housing. If the parameters aren't in place, we can do some things in bigger cities. We have less control in smaller municipalities. And so, the idea sort of where we're moving was, okay, we can't force builders to build affordable housing, but we have to put the zoning in place to allow it, should the market conditions be there. So, that's really where that shift is. It's from, you have to have 108 units to provide the logistics from the town side to allow 108 units to develop. Should rental rates be high enough? And should developer rates and interest rates be in place? So, it's not for the municipalities to now have to make them, but we have to have them available, if that provides clarity. So, again, that zoning, to have the map in place, to have the densities to allow it, is really where the state's been moving over the last 20, 30-year window.
Wait, Amy, into how we're going to meet the schedule. And to start, our goal, as we mentioned before, is to meet the adopted housing element deadline of May 31st, 2015. And Larry, we listened, Mr. Bragman, we listened to your comment at the council meeting on November 5th. And you said, "Is there any way to sort of get some leeway with HCD?" In terms of the timing and the fast-tracking of this thing, because January 31st is very onerous. And so, Amy actually was the, had information on a little wiggle room that the public doesn't generally have. And Amy, maybe you'd like to explain how we're gonna have a little bit gentler ride getting to the finish line of May 31st?
Yeah, so, this deadline is not a new thing in terms of the housing element, but there is more power behind it this time because as a result of Senate Bill 375, there is now a law that says, if you meet HCD's deadline, then you will receive another eight-year planning period for your housing element in the sixth cycle. If you don't meet the deadline, you will receive a four-year planning period for the sixth and seventh cycles. So, there are a couple of things that, like Jim just mentioned, that are caveats to that. So, the deadline is indeed January 31st of next year, but there is a 128-year period to that deadline. So, that pushes it to May 31st. And then the other thing that we've learned when working with other jurisdictions who are very close to meeting their deadline, but might not, working with the state, what we've been told, and there is a memo on this law that you're also referring to, that if the town adopts their housing element before that May 31st deadline, that meets the letter of the law. If you are not completely finished negotiating with HCD about what you will require to certify your housing element, then you would need to continue to work with them for the next several months, or as long as it took to reach agreement with them. And then you would need to readopt. But you would have met the law that provides you with another eight-year planning period. So, that is one option. It does require-- It does require two general plan amendments, but it would be a trade-off in terms of getting you that longer planning period.
Great, thank you.
So Amy, I have a question. So when we last heard about the streamline process, it was if we got it in by January thirty-first, they have a guaranteed sixty-day turnaround, and then we would have time to fix it, to get it finished by May thirty-first. But now it sounds like we've got some wiggle room, as long as we get in something that's good faith effort, good, within that hundred and twenty days, and we actually adopt it before May thirty-first, that we still would basically be on the streamlined track. Is that, I'm a little confused. I mean, that sounds good, like good news.
So a little bit of terminology confusion, and I didn't get a chance to correct the agenda before it went out, but there's two, there are two new things for HCD in terms of the schedule and their review this time, and one is what I just described, which is the timing and, excuse me, the, the length of a planning period, and the other thing is what is called a streamlined review process. And that's a separate but related thing. And what that is, is if the town had implemented a set of requirements from the previous housing element, they would be eligible for what is called a streamlined review. And that is a reduced time period for a review of the draft from sixty days, which is the statutory requirement for any housing element, down to about thirty to forty-five days. So right now, the town is not eligible for that review, because not all those items have been implemented yet. It could be possible to get there in a couple of months, but that is separate from what I described a minute ago in terms of when your housing element is actually due. So the streamlined review really just gets to a slightly faster review period, and brings your schedule down a little bit in terms of making your housing element update. So that's the difference.
Okay, so basically, we're not on a streamlined track, but we're on this eight-year planning period timeframe, I don't know what we call that. And if we get our housing element adopted by May thirty-first, hopefully sooner, then we are eligible for that, correct? But we call it something different.
Yeah, so that's just meeting the HCD's due date, and staying in compliance, so that's what, that's what that would be called. And then the streamlined review is really more about the review of your document during the update.
And is there a benefit for us to really work hard to meet the January thirty-first date, other than just getting it done? Or being somewhere much earlier than May thirty-first? What's the downside if we adopt something by May thirty-first, and it's really, HCD isn't liking it, and we work with them? I mean, are there pros and cons that we should discuss?
Let me jump in for just a second, Amy. That might be one reason, actually, to have an alternative site like Deer Park, in the sense that we don't, the only thing that seems a little bit unknown at this point is what they may come back with with regards to the second units. We have to do a thorough background investigation to their satisfaction. We feel like we've done a pretty thorough background investigation, but they could go sideways on us in terms of doing more investigation to confirm that. And it would be nice if they said, "Well, we don't believe it's sixteen, we think it's eight," and then there's another site available. That makes sense, Amy?
Yes, definitely. And then also, just to respond to the question about what are the pros and cons of adopting when the housing element is not finalized? The main issue is that you would have to go through two general plan amendments to adopt twice. And it would also have to do with, you know, what, how does your community view that approach? And I don't know if it would be, you know, any different from adopting it, it's actually finished, and not receiving a longer planning period.
And what is the benefit?
Then you have, you have more time to work out any differences with HCD prior to that major first date, and that, that has more reasoning behind it, with that caveat I've just learned, that this local adoption is bigger. Does that make sense?
I still, I, so is the benefit that if we, if we hit a glitch, we have more time to fix it up during that time?
Right, right. And again, remember, how long, Amy, but given the fact that we just got here, because we're so late, and we're together, HCD's very familiar, or Amy's very familiar with it. It looks like it's going to be pretty much a trade-off between the existing sites for Rena cycle three and four, and rolling those sites over to accommodate five and six, sorry, four and five, with the caveat about the second units and the optional sites. Because there, there was some hard earned example about School Street Plaza, we had all dated nine years to that site. We may hear in subsequent meetings that people will not want any housing on that site, as we will all, as a body, consider. Likewise, there was a little hard earned about the second units and, sorry, upstairs units in the downtown. You could possibly identify sites to substitute for some of those, if it becomes difficult to fulfill the zoning as we go through the process.
And let the record show that Mallory Geitham from the Affordable Housing Committee joined us. Joanne, thank you. So any other questions for our technician? I might add, it's so good having Amy finally on board. We executed the contract under Mr. Kenning's master contract on Friday, and, you know, most jurisdictions rely on learned expertise like this because of the minutia in all these regulations. It's really important to have someone that's doing this day in and day out. How many, how many housing elements has PMC been working on, Amy?
We've probably done about twenty-five so far this cycle.
This cycle, for cycle five? Wow, so it's very helpful. So with that, are there any other questions as far as, I guess the, the next one is, we talked about the strategy for moving through the process. We've, we've talked before with the Affordable Housing Committee about the second units in Deer Park. You'll notice that there are not the other two opportunity sites on this list this time, either increasing School Street Plaza, and/or including the site further up Olima, they've dropped by the wayside. But I guess I'd be interested to get some direction from you all as we start to put together this draft document, whether we should continue to count sixteen second units towards our quota, and/or Deer Park, or any other sites that anybody would like to throw out on the table? To get some direction from you all on that would be helpful.
I, I think the secondary units are crucial. I think that tends to serve a lot of the senior needs, so those sixteen, and if there's more out there, to try to get any other secondary units that we can to come forward.
I'm assuming that when we're talking about secondary units, that they're, we're referring to our own chapter seventeen, point oh-four-eight?
It's actually, I think the, both new, newly constructed second units and newly legitimized second units, both. And also, that's why, and, and the caveat that we would throw in some language there, not that it makes a difference, but about junior second units in terms of how we would be amending the second unit ordinance in the town. So it'd be both the second units ordinance and the amnesty ordinance also that's lapsed.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, could you tell me what junior second unit refers to? Is that the in-house thing that we were talking about last time?
Yes, exactly. Thank you, thank you, Tony. This was a concept that's being vetted up in Nevada as we speak, with a lot of forward work going on. It's about using areas within existing homes and creating unused, or using unused capacity in those homes to create junior units with a separate entrance, with a galley kitchen, which would not be the full kitchen that you'd normally have. And some of the benefits to that for the, yes, bathroom. And I, right now, I think the jury's still out on whether that bathroom has to just be a shared bathroom or a dedicated bathroom. They're still negotiating with HCD. It's a really new concept, but it won't make any material difference, except from the standpoint, it'll be, we'll be proposing it as part of our second unit policy. There, there's some real benefits to this strategy, just outside of the whole Rena and, and having to jump through the state hoops, and that is, it's, it's densifying within the built environment. If you have a bedroom that's technically already entitled, technically someone can be living in that bedroom, they can, you know, as part of the household, they can have a car, they have hookups, water hookups, electricity, so you're not reinventing the wheel with hookups, with parking. It's, it's densifying, to use a bad word, densifying within the built environment. Thanks for asking that, Tony.
Could you talk a little bit about the process with identifying alternate opportunity sites in this next round, in terms of can we, can we identify sites? Are you talking about identifying sites now in this update that get vetted by HCD and approved as alternates? Not that we are saying they have to be there, but that they're pre-approved or whatever by HCD, so that if we did choose to later amend our housing element after it's been approved by HCD, we could just swap out sites without having to go back, and it wouldn't, is that, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, yes. And I think, I guess, and help me, Amy, I guess in terms of HCD approving the sites, they're approving them as alternatives, and we would have to identify whether zoning would have to, if they get folded into the quota, then we'd have to identify what zoning requirements would have to be implemented to allow those sites to be used. For example, Deer Park is currently zoned limit, like commercial, and that only allows housing with a conditional use permit, so we would say that if Deer Park was going to get swapped in, it would have to be appropriately zoned to allow housing by right. However, it would still have to go through design review for things like massing and design details and parking requirements, et cetera, et cetera. And also, just by the way, staff's recommendation at this point, in our thinking, is to not formally include those as the targeted opportunity sites, hold them in reserve. And then we can change things, you know, if we get to the point where in the, we get to another sort of difficult point in adopting the zoning changes, then there's some options available to us. Likewise, it would be helpful, since this is a fairly tight timeline, even with the discovery we've had so far about the adoption kicker, we think that if this succeeds with using the sites from cycle three and four for cycle five and, four and five, that our SEQA analysis will be much more, much easier and simple. We'll simply need to do an addenda, do an ancillary analysis and an addendum to the existing mitigated NAGDEC. Sorry, it sounds like Planter Gobligoo, but it's, the California Environmental Quality Act requires us to do a review every step of the way. So we, we'd recommend that we list those opportunity sites, but we hit the mark with what we had identified, if allowed, in the prior housing element.
So I would, I would advocate for the approach of holding any alternate sites in abeyance, not including them, because I think we might be in a situation where, I'm not sure, but it seems like the county's going where they're putting in so much, and I think once it's in there, it's part of it. And so I think we're better off holding it if we agree that it's something we could consider, I think we should convene, if we get into that situation and discuss it more fully. But to me, it seems good to have kind of a back pocket approach to an alternate site should things go by the wayside on some of the other things.
So did I hear you right, include that we, include the point that we have alternative sites, but not vet them in terms of SEQA analysis?
No.
Or recommend the zoning changes? It's just if, and, we have a caveat now in existing housing elements, it says, if for some reason we can't rezone the targeted sites, we'll find other sites
Right.
to meet our quota. We see that language enduring.
Yes, I think that would be, that would be the way I would advocate.
Great.
There's also, we, we're also, right now, dealing with Deer Park on, on the noise issue, and I think sort of adding this to that would not be wise. So I agree with the comments about second units, and also maybe expanding it to the junior second unit concept.
It sounds like you're concerned that we, we won't be able to get the second units that we need, and that we will have to go to...
Well, I just, I just don't know. We're, we're being modest now. We've identified approximately thirty units, we're pretty confident are existing illegal, and we have another fifty that we think are likely, and depending on who you listen to in town, there's, you know, some folks think there's hundreds, and there may be, I don't know, but the research we've done to date lists those. So we don't want to blow the model and go in too high, especially since we have these other existing sites from cycle three and four. And as we get into that, we can report back to you as we go through the process on where that looks like it's going. Because we'll try to get an early read, I don't know if we can do this, Amy, but it'd be nice to go, you know, revisit this issue with Melinda, and just get a real clear understanding as we go into it, exactly what's going to satisfy her before we do the extra work.
Yeah, we did, we were able to do that in the fourth cycle, and we'll hold that back again, because it's not a, it's not a guaranteed offer, so we'll check it out.
Can I ask one point of clarification? So Rena three somehow goes away, and could Jim or Amy explain where, I mean, I love that, where that comes from? I want to make sure that we're not in a situation where later we're told, "Oh, no, you have to include that." So I want to understand the genesis of that argument.
So that's been verbally confirmed by the state as well, and we can definitely try to get that in writing?
I think we definitely should, because I really don't want us to be in a situation where they change their minds, and then we're looking at another sixty-one. While we're still are looking at our, you know, legal analysis of this statute, but, so I think we should definitely get in writing from them. Even if it's a confirmation email, let's do that, because we don't want that changed on us.
That's, that's a great idea. So I forgot I was the chairman of the meeting, and I think we should try to move forward through our agenda.
Okay.
So where are we?
So we're, we are, I think I've gotten, we're, we're through six, and I think we go back to five, and then we'll end on seven and eight.
Very good. So we're back to five?
Yeah, Mr. Kenning's.
No. Thank you. I'll be really quick, so that we can go back to the fun stuff. At your last meeting, you had asked for the parking requirements from Sausalito, and they, for their second units, I'm sorry. They, they use seven hundred square feet as their breakpoint. For units that are seven hundred square feet or less, they require one, one off-street parking space. For units that are greater than seven hundred square feet, they require two off-street parking spaces. And then they have policies that allow some of these things to be waived if certain conditional use permit language is added to it. The, and you also asked about the bliness?
Before we go there?
Yes, ma'am.
How does that compare to our parking requirements? Been a while since I've looked at that for second units, or for anything.
We require one extra onsite space for a second unit, I believe, off the top of my head.
I think we allow tandem parking, don't we? Or not? No?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
It helps to have the planning commissioner here.
It, it does, okay.
Well, Sausalito would allow tandem parking if certain conditions are made. You can't park in the right way, you can't block the, the neighbor's driveway, things like that, but they, they do allow tandem as one of the conditions.
Okay, so that may be something...
I mean, the language is there if you folks want to incorporate that into
Yeah.
our future deliberation.
Okay, so that might be a way to kind of liberalize it, and... Okay, so that might be a way to kind of liberalize it and make that happen.
And then you also ask about the Bolinas Land Trust. It's actually called the Bolinas Community Land Trust. And it was... They crafted it in 1982. You ask about the projects they have. They have three buildings that are part of the trust. There's 15 dwelling units that accommodates 23 folks right now, including four children. They have one called the Bolinas Station, which has two townhouses for families. They have one called the Bolinas Garage, which is a workforce housing for three single-room occupancy units and three live-work studios. And in that particular Bolinas Garage project, they have three locally-owned commercial spaces and a gas station. And the revenue from the gas station, the rents from those units, they use to recycle their... Pay for their projects. The last one is called Gibson House, and it has seven Section 8 very low-income units in it. And because they're all in their little downtown area, they claim that they're all transit-oriented developments, because they're close to all the services they have and close to transit. Back to the fun stuff.
Okay, and could I just follow up on that? The reason I brought that up at the last meeting is these are actual units being occupied by people and not planned zoning changes that are just done to comply with HCD. So I think it speaks more to what Nicolo was talking about, about actually accomplishing and actually building some housing for folks, as opposed to getting run around by HCD and doing zoning changes. So it's just something for us to think about. That is a private nonprofit, if I'm not correct. So it's something, you know, it's going to take a lot of community input to get it going, but if any place can do it, other than Bolinas, it's probably fair for us, so.
And they do, they have no vacancies at this time. All those units are filled.
Sure. Sure. Thanks.
Okay, well, if that completes the questions, the next steps are that we're going to get busy. We have a lot of background analysis with demographics to do. There's a lot of busy work in putting together a document like this, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Larry and Amy, but we will hustle to get a draft document together and then reconvene, just as we are tonight, and get into the woods on the details. I'll be checking all the tables and the math numbers on this document very carefully. And so we'll reconvene another meeting, and we'll move forward with all due expedition, if that's okay.
Yeah, a question. When do we expect to reconvene the next meeting?
Amy, what's your guess?
I think we have a draft estimated as about February or March at this point.
Okay, and well, of course, we'll do our best to get it as fast as possible.
Right.
Right. And I just want to personally reiterate... What's that? Ah. Mr. Chair. It's hard not to.
So the two bullet points on item number five addressed prior questions and I think addressed one of the questions that was asked by our audience beforehand, but we also had another question about unit size. Can we change some of the provisions on the current opportunity sites to limit the size of the units? And how might that, and I guess I'm asking it, how might that or not affect our approval of it? Could we change the size of the units in all the opportunity sites to be small, or some of the opportunity sites to be small?
And that...
I think for the church site in Teno Lima, it would be certified for. For the other sites, I think this would be fine. So without further analysis of what you would want to do, that would be my initial response.
Well, if everybody's comfortable with taking that approach, we can try to push in that direction. Smaller is more affordable. We've been having... We've had that philosophy from the beginning, so we'll take that as direction, if that's okay.
On that point, there's a project in Marin County that's moving forward right now, the Oma Village Project for, you know, very low-income, formerly homeless families that's focused on very small units, and they have an effort to demonstrate the small house movement. So I think that might be something interesting for us.
Excellent. There are actually units being built in San Francisco now, down to 240 square feet.
Well, I happen to know there are what's called tiny houses available that are around 170 square feet, and that's pretty small already.
Safety code will let you get down to two... The building code will let you get down to 320, I think, and the health and safety code will let you get down to 240 if you override the building code with a special ordinance, something like that, if I remember correctly. But we'll do that. And there is still on the agenda, Mr. Chair, I mentioned the next steps, but we're on number eight, Commissioner, committee members' questions, comments, questions, and requests.
Anybody have any comments, questions, requests?
Yeah, I just... I'm very interested in the legal opinion on that section that Barbara cited, Section Would definitely be very interested in getting that back as soon as possible, the opinion on that. Because that's actually challenging the whole program, is that not?
Actually, not exactly. If this succeeds, we can roll three and four into four and five and be pretty well-covered. We have to come up with, depending on the number of units we permitted since 2006, we have a little deficit, and we have to make up that deficit. But we're pretty much covered with our prior housing element for the new quota and the existing number four. We should-
I would just... We may be able to pick up some more credit if that argument pans out.
Right.
So it's definitely worth us pursuing.
It makes it...
So we did agree that we would do that right away.
Yes.
That's not something we're going to wait on, and that's a next step and direction to staff.
Is that a recommendation that we have to put to the council, or is it just...
I just got news from... I'm sorry, I've just got news from the town manager that it's already gone to the town attorney. So we'll get the town attorney involved.
Okay. So that may come up at the next council meeting on December 3rd, actually.
And please, if I-
Don't forget the analysis of 65583F as well, that might give us another year to do the zoning.
Yep.
And please be assured that when we hear comments in meetings or town council, whatnot, you know, we appreciate these comments, and we look forward to finding out what the correct information is. It may not always appear to be so, but I appreciate the information that came along. It got us to the point where we have a greater understanding of what's going on. So we always welcome people to come forward and point things out, and we appreciate that.
In talking about the housing element, I understand the need to focus on getting it certified and getting the units needed for that. But I'm also very interested in the data that we collect about the needs of different groups within Fairfax for affordable... Like, how many seniors do we have that can't afford housing? How many people in the workforce are... I mean, what do we really know about the needs? And I'd like to have, you know, work that into our conversation at affordable housing meetings.
You hear that okay, Amy?
I heard most of it, and that's going to be a pretty major difference from the document we saw last year, is that we have entirely new data to include this time. And that's one reason that we can't finish the draft in one month, although the analysis of the land could stay quite the same. But we are required to update data from the 2010 census and other more recent sources, so you'll be seeing a clean-up section there.
I think my comment is, as we move ahead potentially with changes to the general plan in general, is looking at sort of the highway commercial and the central commercial areas as ways in which we can increase density to make use of the infrastructure that's already in place, between parkings and roads and transportation systems. And I know we've done that before, and there's resistance from the community, but opening it as dialogue as to why some of those areas do make the most sense for our community, that A-BAG's going to continually give us new housing targets in which we're going to have to meet in the future. And those become areas that are more sustainable for us to build at moderate densities than hillside areas and some of our other residential areas. So I think we just want to keep that in the forefront of our discussion in the future.
Can I have one more thing, Jim?
Yes.
So when you asked earlier about what are the things that could be consequences if the housing element is not certified or conditionally certified by the end of May, the other thing is that you would be out of compliance until you receive certification. So last time you had the OBAG grant that was pending. So if you had anything like that that you were trying to access, that would be another reason to work as quickly as possible to get it certified.
Right. Although that OBAG grant turned out not to be an OBAG grant, and the funding actually was not held up, so.
So that's, yeah, that's unfortunate, and there isn't always a reason like that to get certified. And some communities have funding that they access on a regular basis from HCD that they don't go to Fairfax as. But just to let you know, that is one other reason that communities like to stay in compliance.
Right.
The other day, that the OBAG funds for the next cycle are going to be much more substantial. The OBAG grant money is a lot larger in the next pool. So... And just for the record, Larry, while we've had it now come back to us the other way, that we are required to have certified housing element, we have a certified housing element, and we have a complete streets policy. The compliance issue doesn't wrinkle into this, from what I know. So I think we're good. Regardless of the mixed signals we're getting, I think we're good with that grant.
Right, right. I just, you know, I don't want to reopen that whole can of worms. I mean, we're at the silver lining playbook stage. I mean, we've gone through this whole controversy. Everybody knows more than they did when we started, you know? So now it's like bringing it past the goal line again. But, I mean, I think everybody's kind of wised up to some of the pitfalls of HCD and the whole process that we're involved in. And it's not just Fairfax. It's not just Marin. It's happening in a lot of communities across the country. And, you know, it's a serious thing. And I just think all the different points of view need to be on the table, all of them. And the main thing, and I agree with Tony, is like meeting, really meeting, community needs.
Yeah, and I want to revisit the rezoning issue, because I know it's been a point of absolute contention in this community, but it sounds to me that we're going to have to do some kind of rezoning. And is there any feeling that we could rezone these individually, as opposed to trying to do any kind of blanket rezoning? Is that any thought put behind that? Is that what the intention is?
Well, I mean, that's going to be up to staff, it's going to be up to the council, you know? I think if I was on the council, which I'm not going to be, I think I would try a different approach next time and maybe do it in segments.
So to actually identify the individual projects or potential projects and rezone just those specific properties?
I would do it in a... It's going to be up to the council and up to staff, but given our last experience, I would do it in segments, just so that people understand each step as we go through it.
And I think I would just add, David, that... I think, I don't want to put words in Larry's mouth, but when we talk about segments, it's not necessarily individual projects. It's... What happened before was the zoning ordinance had so much rezoning going on and so much change, you know, central commercial or central highway to central commercial, this PDD, this coupled with the errors that were in the housing element was really a problem. So now we're looking, the first thing we did was we fixed the errors in the housing element. And so that strips away some of the concerns that people had about potential upzoning of open space that was never even contemplated. So I think we'll see where the council goes, and it will be a different council, you know, with a new member soon. But I think our initial plan is to look at things segment-wise, you know, one bite at a time. Not necessarily one property at a time, but one clump of stuff at a time. Thank you, zoning district at a time versus clump.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thanks.
I do think there's a little danger in doing spot zoning and piecemeal zoning. Part of the general plan, it's, in other communities, a comprehensive plan, it's meant to look at things in its totality. And so there certainly can be a need to look at a particular slice and rezone a slice, but we want to look at sustainability. And if we keep looking at things in slices without looking at the impact that it's going to have on parking and other public services, it makes the process more difficult. We can change our... Mend our general plan up to four times a year, so it's not something that we can do on a monthly basis or... You know, so I mean, I think there are decisions that we need to make and look at, and certainly if we're trying to address housing needs for our Rena cycle, but I think it is a better practice for us to look at things in a very comprehensive view and a long-term frame instead of this short-term reactive zoning. We really want to be proactive in how we go about it.
Yeah.
I just, I've got to respond to that, because I don't think that's what we're talking about. I think the housing element is a comprehensive look at community planning. What we're talking about, and I think what David's question's talking about, is implementation. The last time we tried to implement our housing element, we did it in one package, and we ran into a lot of problems with that, because that package went from one end of town to the other. And so what I think we're getting to is, once we get the global picture finished with the housing element, that we implement it segment by segment. And that's not spot zoning, that's just doing it in a more orderly fashion, not all-in-one big ordinance, which is just, it's a more difficult proposition. And I think getting it down into smaller pieces that the community can digest is what we're talking about. So just to clarify that point.
One thing to think about in that, though, is the timing factor. I mean, if we have to have zoning done within a certain amount of time, you know, for purposes of housing element implementation, then it has to move quickly.
I think we probably are going to get about a year, and I think if Phil's observation about that Section F is correct, you know, we're... I think that's about the timeframe that we're looking at.
I just want to add that I think for a large town with a big population and more room, that would be relevant. And I also think it's not reactive to make smaller zones, it's selective, and I think that's, you know, that's what we do here.
I do, I would like to just follow up also, and I think part of the problem that we've seen is the general public are not part of these proceedings many times, and there's a lot of complicated issues involved with zoning and planning. It would be a lot easier for communication purposes to deal with specific... I mean, every project out there is going to have to have, be planned and thought thoroughly on a holistic basis. But just the way we've seen how this town operates, we've got to make sure that the communication to the public is done and done thoroughly. We don't want to have a repeat of what happened this past year.
In that regard, we've had two town forums, one overview of the general plan of housing element. The second one was looking more closely at Teno Lima for workforce housing and School Street Plaza. And the next workshop is proposed to be on the CH to CC, and the town manager, Mr. Garrett, will be bringing an item forward at the council meeting on December 3rd, reporting on the results of those two forums and making staff recommendations on going forward to hold another forum.
Okay. Have we completed our agenda? Yet.
Yeah, I yield to you.
Yeah, I yield to you. Think so.
Oh.
Oh.
What about public comment about all this?
Ah, that's a good idea.
Do we have anybody that's in the audience that wants to enter a comment to the record? Kiki?
Hi, Kiki Laporta. It's more of a question first, thanks, it's been a very edifying evening. In terms of counting the second units against our arena allocation, I understand that HCD has come down with some decisions that allow us to, that they will count. However, I would like to know where we are in terms of our town allowing junior second units. And in addition to the lesser requirements for a junior second unit as opposed to an accessory dwelling unit, I understand that a junior second unit purportedly would not require sprinklers, would not require additional parking, and those would be two additional factors that would make them more attractive for people to implement in town. So, I don't know if you are able to talk about that tonight, but it's something that we'll want to address as far as making those units count for our quota.
And if I could respond, it remains to be seen what the policy will look like for the town. I think we're definitely, we've got direction to move forward with including language on the junior second units, so it's up to the powers that be, it'll go to the planning commission and just type a meeting again, probably with the Affordable Housing Committee, and then formally to the planning commission, then the town council. When we get to that ordinance piece, not this general plan housing element piece, there's nothing that would stop someone, if someone's watching at home tonight or on the tape, to come in for an application for a junior unit. I think the planning commission's kind of piqued to it, they've been, you know, appraised of it. And then lastly, we have had it on our radar going forward with amending the second unit ordinance and the amnesty ordinance to, if possible, relax both the sprinkler requirement and the second, the parking requirement on second units in what's called the non-wildlife urban interface, the non-wooey corridor of town, the sort of the flat interior part of town, and then up to a 30% slope, with the rationale being that fire sprinklers are about helping fight the fires and that those units are more accessible to the fire department to get to one. And we did actually relax the sprinkler requirement on new second units in the most recent building code update. And then second, relax, this all remains to be seen through the public process where people get to stand up and discuss it, but relaxing the parking requirement within the non-wooey up to 30%, with the idea being that those areas of town are more centrally located and you could perhaps walk to transit, walk to downtown, ride your bike more easily to downtown. But the actual policy language needs to be created and then gone through the public process and then approved by the powers that be, the town council.
Let me just add, so I just attended an ABAG delegates meeting last night, and an ABAG deputy director was there. As far as junior units, the law would need to be changed to allow them to be included as part of the arena, and that was acknowledged last night. But as far as where we are in Fairfax, we want to go there. So, you know, there's more than just our housing element, it's where we want to go. And the last meeting we had of the Affordable Housing Committee, someone came who does junior units and sat in and just gave during public comments, so-
Popper.
Yeah, and I see him all the time, I run into him all the time, so they're very interested in doing that, and I think David brought him. So, we're interested in doing it, and so that's where we're going here.
Am I allowed to follow up with a question?
Thank you. With regard to the idea of wanting to promote second units and infill where we have already built in Fairfax, whether or not it counts for, against our arena quota, obviously the barrier for people to do that in their homes is the cost, if they have the physical plant that will permit it and it works for them and their family. So, other issues to consider, and the town may or may not have control or jurisdiction, but potentially could have influence in terms of permitting requirements for electrical and water, and, you know, all of the other, what the public would call red tape, that might inhibit their desire to do this openly, and also to get appropriate permits for safety and other things, so, thanks. Any idea of timeline when such an ordinance might be coming forward?
I would yield to the town manager on that, and he would yield to the council, I would guess.
Which would yield to the town?
We have a lot, we have a lot on our agenda.
Except Nevada's already considering one now, and so if they actually adopt one, it won't be too long before everybody else follows suit.
And I have a copy of their draft resolution.
I think they had their first reading.
Yeah, okay. And Mr. Chair, just a heads up, we do have to leave by 7:00, because AA is coming in.
Yeah, I have a question too. In the whole discussions about compliance or not compliance in regard to rezoning by January 31st, what I didn't hear is what would be the consequences if we were found out of compliance, and would it be any different than if we adopted the zoning by January 2016?
You want to take that one?
Sure. So, the January 31st, 2015 deadline is for the program, they're saying there's fourth cycle housing element, and that is as good as passed, is what we've heard from the state. So, it would be a tough argument at this point to try to convince them that you were going to meet that deadline and that that would be acceptable to them. Then, what is anticipated is that once the legal requirements are checked out, if indeed the town does need to address the fourth and fifth cycle numbers, then there will be a program placed in the fifth cycle housing element that would require the rezoning to address the roughly 124 units. We'll get an exact number once we've done some additional analysis. And that program must be implemented by January 16th, sorry, January 31st, 2016.
So, just, this is, you know, nuances. If we don't make the deadline and if indeed it is found that, no matter what the wording is, we are found out of compliance, it simply means we have to continue on with the existing identified opportunity sites and make sure that they get zoned by 2016. Is that correct?
It doesn't mean that you have to keep the same sites, but you do have to-
You have to keep the same number.
That are along the lines of what you have between that set of sites.
And are there any other consequences?
Well, you would then be out of compliance, so you would not be eligible to have certified housing element until that rezoning was complete.
And we'd be on the four-year cycle. We'd be on the four-year cycle instead of the eight.
I'm not sure if that would put you on the four-year cycle, that's different than the May 31st deadline.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to see if there's any other consequences besides that.
Wouldn't there be funding opportunities that we'd be missing?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, depending on how things were at that point, then, you know, the likelihood that you would have to do this combination of two cycles again would be much higher than if you got those rezones completed with the deadline.
So, the other, if we succeed in saying, look, we found a loophole here, we might not have to have as many for the cycle five.
Correct.
Okay.
But all of those numbers are to be determined, so it's hard to say this is what the numbers would be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Are we ready to adjourn?
To adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Any opposition? We're adjourned.
You better hurry.